What I need, what I'm looking.
Oh, yeah.
Get with the windows online, just like that.
Right.
There you want.
That's.
Yeah.
The actors.
Yeah.
Say.
That's very, not, not racist thing, but I'm for many.
It's okay. That's bad. So this is.
And that's.
So we have to get. Six, Terry. How you know.
We're didn't know this, so.
Never mind.
Things. Obviously. That's all right. I don't. Yeah.
Well, they don't, yeah. You know how they. They were not doing.
Oh, yes, yes.
We just want to. They all three. It was. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Right, it's only one. We don't want. So. Yeah. Okay. This is doing. And they say. That is. That wasn't in that. Right. You see. You know, that's, you're right, that's.
You get it right.
Good.
I guess. Yesterday, they. He did.
You're away.
Well, I mean, the arm for, um, this.
First, we were okay, so there are Karen Rachel. Karen Rachel back up.
Yeah. So that's. Yeah. Wait, the title wave. It's.
Yeah.
But you.
Trying times. Right. That's very discouraging.
Commissioner. Commissioner Moore.
Yeah.
There he is.
He heard. So. Yes. It's theirs.
Yes.
Yeah. Are you ready? Yeah. Yeah. If they trust you. But don't talk about that, that sounds.
Yeah. Okay. I'm working on. You guys on.
Okay.
It's. How should we value? Yes.
So that's not.
Yeah. Not too bad. Yeah. Okay, everyone, welcome to the workshop today's date, March twenty fifth. We're gonna start with, uh, calling a roll, Adam, quick.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
Here. Agenda item one, expense the reading of the minutes, the workshop data March eleventh, two oh two five, and regular meeting dated March twelfth, two oh two five. Two, prove the bills. Three. Prove annual procreation resolution to provide for the current expenses and expenditures of Trumbull County during the fiscal year ending December three, one, two oh two five for the general fund and all other funds, oh, two through nine, nine, five of Trumbull County. Four, to establish creation of GIS Enterprise Fund, even known as Fund Point zero eight one for use by the Trumbull County Auditor. Uh, GIS Enterprise is geographically integrated system allows organizations to manage, collaborate, and use spatial data and related map information. Madam Auditor, I don't know if you would want to elaborate on that, or?
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, in past meetings, we have discussed that we want to work at things that can generate revenue. To, you're less dependent upon general fund, uh, G I, this is kind of the first step for GIS Enterprise Fund. We currently operate GIS and tax map out of our office. GIS is critical for both our GIS for our real estate and our tax map part of what we've been doing. Um, but GIS is also used in other places within the county, um, planning commission utilizes it, sanitary also, I believe has it. And what we would like to be able to do is, uh, work all together as a, with the G I, GIS Enterprise software, so we're not all each individually paying for the software. And also, um, ultimately have a GIS advisory board which could generate, which would be able to generate revenue. So this will be a money-saving uh, effort for us, and this is just our first step in setting up that fund so that we're ready to do this, we can do it. It would be both money-saving, and as I said, could possibly be able to generate more revenue, um, by serving other entities within the county, which.
So. Um, sure, you're. It's a service we, do we provide that now?
No, we do not. Um, we do, the GIS that we do, we're right now within our office is just for our real estate services, but it's, it's what we're doing to be utilized by other entities. And also, Planning Commission uses their own GIS, but it's the same system as RE, as does sanitary, we would like to work together with them to be able to save money despite cost.
Uh, as far as the tax map, I thought the tax map was gonna eventually go.
It will, it will, but GIS, it will not go to their office, it will be under their office, we're working on a MOU, however GIS is utilized for tax.
Madam Auditor, is this something that's need to be done right now?
Well, it's, it's, it will be in place so that when we're ready to, we have it.
Okay, because.
It's just creating a.
I can personally, I'd be getting a lot more information on this before we start creating new funds. I, I mean, I don't know anything about it. You got. All right, I just got a good education there, appreciate that, I, I. Well, I think, I think we need some. I understand the revenue structure, I guess, I guess maybe.
Right, well, and that's, that's upcoming, however, that will, this enable that, it puts that foundation in place when we're ready.
Where would the funds go now if we made money?
There's, well, they would. They don't have a place to go, that's the point.
So we don't collect any funds from this day yet, okay? So this is a brand-new.
Right, correct.
Thought for revenue, thoughts up there.
Do you have another question, sir?
Oh, well, well, I didn't know if we answered this question, but basically to establish the fund, do we need to, uh, do we need to have monies in?
No, it's just, I, it's just putting it in the structure, that's all it's doing, it's putting it in the accounting structure is all we're doing.
So this is just to. Just. It's.
Putting it in the accounting structure is all we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, but you're talking about, uh, appointing a board and.
Right, and that, right, and when we get to that point, we will, we will, we will bring that to you, this just adds that, so it's in place for when we're ready.
Commissioners, I think that we would have to vote to, I mean, if we vote for the fund, would we not have to then vote for a board afterwards? And this might be a, I don't know, Bill, do you have any comment on it?
Um, Bill Danzo, Prosecutor's Office, I don't know honestly whether this would be a statutory board, or sometimes the commissioners have, or the county has other boards that are sort of just advisory, non-statutory, so I, I don't have any experience.
Right, and this is something for, the advisory board part of this where we'd be generating revenue comes later. This part of, but allowing us to have a GIS fund also helps us to work with our other departments in GIS.
How many GIS people do we have right now?
In my, in my office, we have five individuals employees who currently do both GIS and tax.
Is this something down the road that would help pay for them a little bit, is that what this is, is a revenue thing that kind of help?
It would pay, it would pay for the software, and it would help pay for the GIS that the tax map has to come from general fund. Currently, our GIS employees and our software is out of our REA fund. Again, it would make us less dependent upon the general fund because other things can be moved to the REA fund if we have GIS.
So how are we gonna generate revenue?
If, once we get to the point, it still saves us money having a GIS enterprise right now, because we can work together with the other departments, it allows a fund for us to be able to. For the revenue, revenue generation, it would be through the GIS advisory board that would have a lender, lender be set up. And then it would generate revenue because we would be paid for some of the things that we're doing by entities, we would be able to share that information with the entities and be able to.
So basically, first you have to vote to establish.
We need to have.
That, and then you have to vote again to establish a board, if we weren't interested in a board, then you would not vote for it, I guess.
Ultimately.
You're right.
Ultimately, like if sanitary does the other ones, would they lose an employee that would go into this other group, or would they?
No, not necessarily, but it would allow us to share the cost of the software, that's what we're talking about, that's why we need the function. Right now, we're each paying for stuff separately, it doesn't make sense to.
For the same license, same base.
Yep, yep, it's cheaper, don't like save the county money.
We're also about saving the county money.
Well, we are, but I'd like to see a structure on how this is gonna be set up, and how it would work, and have a.
Again, we're not dealing with the board at this point, we, we would be dealing with a fund in order to, yes, and we would see that when we get to that point.
But down the road.
Well, I'd like to see before I create this fund.
The fund isn't just for that advisory board, it is also for sharing the cost of the software.
There's no money there.
Not yet, because there's no board, you know, I mean, you would have to vote for that, I mean, first you vote for the fund, I understand, or to set it up, but then you would have to vote for a board, now if you don't want to vote for the board, then that's.
Right. When we get to that point, we'll be glad to share it, and at that point, that's future, but for now, this is ultimately will be for both of those things.
Yeah, I guess, I, I understand, so we're saying, couldn't that all be done like at one time, like one vote that we, we establish a board, establish a fund, establish?
No, and Alex, but it, the fund is also for the ability for us to share the software with those two other entities and any other entities within the county in order to save money. Right now, as I said, do it, do it separate, this will enable us to work together.
Any more questions, Commissioners?
I, I just like to, I, yeah, I, I probably have some, but just not at this point in time, because it's all new, I mean, it's, I want to make sure I know what I'm voting for before I vote.
You're voting for fun.
I understand.
Uh, for, for.
That's just now being asked.
Do we know when these licenses are due? Is there like a time?
I don't have that off the top of my head, I can, I can get that information.
That, that would be helpful, probably, if we see when and how it's gonna integrate, and if we are gonna do it, we have the fund, where's the first money for the fund gonna come from to integrate and share with people?
Don't.
Because it sounds like it's gonna be cost-saving, so is, the money's gonna come somewhere for.
Well, we would, see, first of all, to pay, it would come from, any money that goes into that fund would come from the different funds that are currently paying for GIS. It would go into that, it would be all in one place for that to be, so for us, it would be our REA fund.
Gotcha.
Right, we would move it.
Where does that there big four dollars?
Uh, Bob Ireland of Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers, um, our license runs from August twentieth to August twenty, the following year, and we pay for that out of our six hundred fund, which is a combination of.
Yeah.
You know off the top of your head where yours is.
Nick Hoggins, Trumbull County, let me mission. We, we have in the general fund, one of the line items, we have three license that are paid out of the general fund, we have a line item specifically for that software. Um, and we use that for planning purposes, when we do plans for town, or cities, townships, uh, we also use it to generate maps, right now, our Kim Vaughn in our office is creating maps for our two T I D applications, um, maps are a part of that application, so we're using that software that. Uh, we also have what's called community analysis, we can analyze based on a geographic space through that software, through Edsri GIS, uh, how many businesses are in that area, how many people they employ, what the average wage is, so we use that for economic purposes as well. Um, mapping services, we provide maps.
And we already do a lot of things jointly, but it would be, as, as, you know, the Auditor's Office, tax, GIS, works a lot with planning already, but this would enable us to work better together.
So it's not taking a job away from anybody or someone's do your thing.
No, no, that, this is, that, the, the initial part of this is preliminary, is, is software, but we can also, because we're all, if we all work together in one enterprise, then we can share information, it will be, it would be beneficial, not just the cost of the software, but beneficial within the county, because we'll be, we'll have a centralized hub for, for the GIS part, instead of being different silos. This is in the past, this has been brought up by our current GIS administrator, um, George, ti, at, at different times, that people kind of just want to shoot their territories. We're trying to avoid doing that and work together to make it better, and again, having this fund, you want us to kind of pull that together in one place.
It's not, because that's all like something, you're dealing with that stuff, you guys.
And even, I think right now, do you guys even have somebody utilizing it in sanitary at this point?
Oh, yeah.
You have, I don't remember, because I knew you had a third person, yeah.
They have longer, yeah, yeah.
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, uh, Commissioners, for our license, uh, Bob just showed me in two thousand twenty four, I think, we paid like eighty-three hundred. So I'm thinking if there's three of us out there paying eighty-three hundred, I think what the other trying to say is, we all group together, we're not gonna have to be paying twenty-five thousand for this thing.
Right, and I think we are, I think because of the size of our. The other, and the other part of that is sharing.
And we can get her for less, but, but she's gonna bill us for a third of it, or whatever it comes out to be.
Right, right, and, and also on this, thank you, but on, on, in, in doing this, we share information with each other as well, so we're not duplicating work, right?
Right.
Um, and also, um, the training part of this, there's a lot of training that goes into the GIS system through Edsri, we can work together on training as well. So when we have training sessions that are like web-based, where our GIS employees are going to that, we, we can, we can split that down as well. So that, so it's, it's very beneficial to the.
And Gary Newbrow, again, um, our guy over there, Dan Lineinger, he's other than all the water sanitary sewer on the minutes, so what our operators do on a field, let's say for a water line break, and then turn it around, there will be a little maps, valves and things like that, they can just pull it up on their laptop, fill in there and say, oh, I need to place this valve, this valve, this valve, isolate it, upright. And then they can document and their everything that they did, same thing with all our valves, they need to exercise all the valves, they have a central database where they're interrupting our information inside this GIS Edsri software to, uh, document, you know, all the work that we're doing out there on water and sewer.
Yeah, they're.
Like, even on the sewer end, oh, which lines it flushes this week, uh, which ones are up, what's the schedule, it's all in, in this package. They've had a guy over there, Dan Lineinger, working on this for the last couple years, get these layers on, and they're just about finished, and it's gonna be a heck of a product, product for us.
And, and the other part of that, that that goes along, is also, when we're talking about, um, development, knowing where to have everything, work together on that. The other thing I didn't mention that's part of what we do at the Auditor's Office with GIS, it benefits our real estate part of things, and it involves what we're talking about, our, uh, evaluation, things like that, GIS plays a part in that, it also plays a big part in what we do for N R one. We do a lot of those kinds of things for N R as well, to make sure that when somebody gets a call, that they're going to the right address and it's mapped. So all this, all this, the county, we're just trying to save money, right?
So it's streamlined.
Yep.
So we're.
Creating another department, or are we just creating another fund?
All you're doing today is creating a fund, there won't be another department, we have a GIS department, they have a GIS, they have a GIS employees, nobody's creating another department.
But eventually, we'll, we'll, we'll not create another develop department, though?
No.
It, it just creates something under your office?
Correct, and, and it, it ma, it makes my office the hub so that all of the, all of us work together. That's all it's.
I mean, if, if the planning commission, sanitary, and they, auditor, all filled with this streamlined, and it works.
And ultimately, if.
In unity, unison, it's better, I, I believe, but, you know, just so it saves money to.
Here.
It could work, if, if it could work if we have all the information, but I'm not sure we have all the information, I, is this the first that you guys are hearing about it? Uh, yeah, are you agreeing to all the creation of this one?
Correct.
Well, we, I, I've had conversations, but I think more with Bob than with you, but, uh, we've talked about it, um, you brought it up, yeah, and I, you were not present, you were in the the meeting, but you weren't there because you were sick, um, when, when we met all together with, um, the engineers and about with regards to, to some questions that they had for planning, and also, um, what we want to do as far as the, um, tax map eventually being under the engineer, or the tax map portion of what we do under engineer, um, and we talked about it then, but I don't think, I think it's more casual without some mention. Again, this is just that preliminary step of having that fund.
Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm the next one too, so I'll go ahead, but, uh, I want to go ahead and read it, interesting things.
That's what I was gonna ask you, yeah. Um, I don't need to read, can you just explain one?
Right, just another fund creation, and this allows us, um, some of the things that we do in our IT, um, and we've had this, kind of been moving towards this in the past as well, the three six, Office three sixty-five fund, where we had each office begin to pay for their software, specifically Office three sixty-five, in, in, because that's a subscription, because we go to things that are more subscription-based for software, it makes a lot of sense to have it do into, paid into a fund, you know, and then, so each office pays for their subscription, then we, as we were working on the budget this year, we realized that there's several things that have not always, they're not always being, um, we're paying for things that we're not getting paid. Right, and so we wanted to set up this fund in order to establish a way for us to be paid for things that we're paid, so, uh, for instance, um, there is a software for court here, court, that's a line item in our budget, we're paying for it, and we're not getting reimbursed. If we would be able to get reimbursed for it, then that would be less general funds to be paying for, if court view gets paid for by the entities that utilize it instead of by us, then it's less general fund.
So it creates another line item.
No, it's, it's a bit of a line item.
Why, why, why don't we collect it, no matter where we collect it, whether, whatever fund we put into, somebody's collecting.
Yes, but this makes sure that it gets collected, because that way, we, you're, we're paying for it, and we're trying to collect it, but if we say, if we can bill them directly and say it needs to go in this fund, and then it will pay out of it, and we do that with Office three sixty-five as well, it, it is a better way of tracking.
So you're getting paid, but it's.
We're not always getting paid, honestly. And we're not always getting paid for some of the things that we do, and this is a way for us to, and again, takes it away from the general fund, we're not, we're not the line of the general fund, it takes us less.
See Commissioner Bernard has questions?
No, I, no, I just. I just don't know where we're going with all this all of a sudden.
It's not really all of a sudden, we, we talked originally, more generally about creating revenue at, and revenue streams, I have mentioned that in several meetings.
Well.
Any other question? All right.
Bill Danzo, Prosecutor's Office, I just want to say the one thing too, and I, I don't disagree at all with what the auditor's saying, I just want to be clear though that in a lot of cases, like court view, for example, in large part, it's used by general fund departments, so, you know, the court is a general fund department, the prosecutor's office, general fund department, so, is for tracking, and it may well be better, I'm not disagreeing with that, but what I would just say though is that, in a way, s, with general fund departments, you're just gonna be taking money from this side and putting it into this side, it's, it, it, I'm not sure entirely that general fund to general fund is revenue creation, let's say.
Correct, and, and I'm not saying that, but not all of it is general.
Right. Sure, and there's others that may not be.
And so having it, having it placed where it is tracked appropriately is better for those general fund, but then there are some things that we're doing for other departments that they're not paying for out of general fund.
Sure.
And they're not, some of them, they're just not paying for, and some things that, you know, when we talked about mandatory and critical, that may be critical to those, to those departments that they're willing to pay for, and we can get, we can uh, recapture that, and again, when that happens, it's less, that peaks for some of the salaries for these IT people, so that we're not relying.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions that we may have?
Well, I do, but my questions will be with the Prosecutor's Office.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. Okay, we're gonna move on to agenda item six, to adopt the resolution for claiming the month of April, two oh two five is Child Abuse Prevention Month in Trumbull County, in conjunction with National Child Abuse Prevention Month, April marks public anniversary of the Child Abuse Prevention Month, twentieth Annual Pinwells Prevention Event. Mr. Gargano?
I'd recommend you guys, uh, attend this, I went the last couple of years, it's, it's humbling, pretty awesome site coming together with pinwells that are there, and, and the last couple of years, there's been less than the year before, which shows Children Services doing their job in a, in a really good way, that they're able, you know, the ultimate goal is to have none out there on the lawn, but I'd highly recommend you put it under your schedule, be there for that, because it is something that, um, we need to make sure that we keep that, the awareness of the Commissioner's Office of what's going on out there and look for ways we can help, but it is after a workshop, one thirty, so I'd ask the, uh, scheduler and clerk, not to schedule and enforce at that timeframe after that workshop first, good, and honestly, I think you'll, you'll be thankful that you went to.
Yeah, definitely. Um, seven, eight, nine, you got Mr. Gargano, I suppose you can, thank you, John Gargano, Trumbull County Department of General and Family Services. Number seven is, uh, requesting the approval of appointment of Ms. Heidi Rose as an eligibility referral specialist two with the, uh, department. Uh, she will be paid twenty dollars, five cents per hour with full-time benefits and will serve a nine-month probationary period. Uh, gentlemen, she was supposed to be on with the most recent ones that we, uh, hired about a month or so ago, but we couldn't get her background checked back in time, so we had to wait for that, and it came back favorable, so that's why she's on today. Uh, number eight is to approve, approve the promotion of Ms. Bliss Benyon as fiscal administrator to non-bargaining, uh, position with, uh, J F S effective April one, twenty twenty-five, Miss Benyon having thirty-eight, thirty per hour with full benefits, and she will serve a nine-month probationary period. Gentlemen, do you get, uh, Miss Benyon, that's three weeks ago, actually, budget meeting, and of course, I'm sure you've met her before. Uh, when I became the director in two thousand twelve, I noticed it didn't have a succession plan or somebody in place, that if something would happen to, uh, Bill Cummings, my administrator at that time, so, uh, she, uh, was awarded the position at that time, has been there ever since, and, uh, unfortunately, that incident, uh, that I had approximately, uh, November of twenty twenty-three, when, uh, Mr. Cummings was hit by a car crossing a crosswalk there in Bliss Benyon, uh, fulfilled the position of his duties and responsibilities, so we didn't lose a step uh, in the process and the budgets and the, in the financial issue. She's done a very good job in asking for the, promoting. Next one is, uh, to authorize, uh, us to enter into these agreements dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, those create twenty-three training opportunities and seven job opportunities, or total cost of, uh, two thousand, two hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-one cents, and that is from the, uh, Leola allocation, there's no general funds that are. Very good, and I think, uh, as far as, um, Miss Benyon, we do have, uh, retirement coming up, though.
With Bill Cummings is retiring actually, uh, thirty-first year of March.
Right.
So she will then take over, so it'll be a seamless transition because she's been in there for so long, and she knows, you know, so, so on, and then once she's in there, obviously, we'll be looking for another fiscal officer for, uh, Bliss's position, because something could happen, well, never, but it happened to Bill, and we would be stuck if we didn't have this position.
Okay, so the county pays a portion of, of your budget, correct?
There's a mandated share.
Right, okay, and part of that mandated share is, is that based on, on how much you receive from the state?
There's a formula that the state uses, dealing with, um, funds that are there and their Medicaid and so forth, so I can't, yeah, explain that.
So, my, my, I'm leading to my.
Sure, my my, I'm leading to my question is, with the county, with us having to streamline government, are you guys looking at cutting costs over there in any way, shape or form?
We've always. We have cut costs, there's a, there's a lot of positions that haven't been filled. Um, we've done other things with child support to um. Give supplies and things like that, uh, less costly and and so forth. So we are doing things, but um, you know, it's depending on what you're looking at.
Yeah, I guess I'm just asking you to to take a hard look at that, that every position doesn't need to be filled.
Right, right, and I agree with you there, but this is a position that we feel.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about just.
Yeah, we we have been doing that, uh, even as uh you're here before in the budget meetings and child support. Uh, I haven't filled five union positions and an administrative position. Knowing or seeing based upon what Melissa and Bill would show me that the funding, there's some concerns, so we haven't filled that. So we're doing the same thing there also.
Good, I I still think we were all aware of it, but that's good.
John, what's the status of the work from home people? In lieu of the governor bringing all the state employees back, president bringing all that state employees back, you're you're the only ones left.
I've had separate discussions with Commissioners, and that was before the budget took priority and stuff. And I was waiting for what you two would uh or would indicate, you know, if you want them to have come back, what's your recommendation?
That's gonna be your recommendation, John, I thought about that too, you're the, you're the director and.
I said, I, as I told Commissioners, about a month or so, I think it is time that they should be returned. Um, it served a purpose, it did well, uh, they still are, you know, producing. But there are some issues with them being back or being home, and that makes it a little bit more difficult. Um, so I don't, I would say yes, we're even back. Just tell me three and I'll have them back, I could have them back on today's Tuesday, I could even have them back at the end of the week, or I could wait until Monday and have them back. Right now, and so you know, they've been on a hybrid schedule, which means, you know, depending on who it is, they're they're coming into the office three days a week, this week and maybe next week. They're coming in two days a week, so it's it's been that since last September, I think it has been.
Well, the governor's orders put them at home, correct?
No, what, well, no, it was actually the COVID.
It was the COVID, well, we went through that, and now that that's over, and the governor's ordering everybody back.
He's ordering the state individuals, um, you know, and President Trump has ordered the federal individuals. Uh, we are county administrators.
Who ordered them?
Did the county, the board of commissioners pass a resolution saying that they were from home? I don't know if it was a resolution, but they ordered everybody because of COVID to be working from home. I don't remember, do you remember? I don't remember.
No, but I do remember when I first got here, you had re- you had these employees that are at home, you wanted to keep them out for another.
For a, for a period.
Another timeframe, part of it was COVID was coming on in, but at the same time, just there were different things with. More employees in the building, more chance of people getting the flu and coming in contact with each other, you know, different things.
And and if you remember, Commissioner, uh, we had the director of the state Department of General Services, Mr. James Schur. And I can't remember if you asked a question or, no, Commissioner, Commissioner can't, can't, can't. As about the state employees working from home, he said the state was doing it, it was being productive for the state, so to speak. And um they would continue to do. Now, I could tell you that, you know, some of the other county agencies are bringing them back, there are others that are not bringing them back because it's working for them. Some of the uh other counties, you know, they let their lease run out for wherever they had their their offices. So now they have to look at that and bring them back, so it's, it's not, it's not one uh way or another. But you think it's time for them to come back?
Okay. I would have a problem.
I would agree with you, John, the only thing I would ask is uh, I wouldn't want to see like a shocking thing, like a memo go out and say you gotta be here Thursday, everyone's back. You like, we have to be respectful to the last couple of years where people's lives have kind of been budgeted around. Working at home and childcare and who's picking little Johnny up from school at three, you know, so I would, I would like to give a heads up.
If I may, if I may interrupt, they have a teleworking agreement. That I could bring them back anytime, I could have them back tomorrow. The other thing that you have to understand with that teleworking agreement, they are working, they're not supposed to be going to pick up their kids at school. They're not supposed to be doing that, and we do have monitoring uh items in position through the computer system. And the supervisors, you know, communicating with them, they do have team meetings and things like that. So I don't have a problem with giving them a little bit of time, but I think giving them a month is excessive.
Is it?
That's my feeling.
Maybe within the next two weeks, start bringing them back a little bit of time, that sounds reasonable. I just don't want you to, I don't want to come out of here like the board's bringing them back and then and they get off to be back Friday and, you know, people come unglued. I mean, give them some time, some respect, give them maybe a two week period and start rotating them back in.
All right, I could give them two weeks, we'll give them a two week notice that they'll all be back in the agency.
Okay, that I think that's fair, just be like, so be respectful, whether we're appreciative that they did. Work with us on that and that they did continue to do their job and did great service, you really didn't miss productivity wise. Um, but um, it's time, it's time, just uh, like you said, if you can integrate it over the next couple of weeks, that would be better than than a shock. Email that, you know, on a Black Friday scenario for everybody.
Well, uh, we'll do that, we'll come back with two weeks. Okay. Thank you, Joe. Um, I don't know, ten, is this prosecutor you went to?
Uh, it's Bill Danso Prosecutor's Office, number ten is uh to authorize the board to enter to a uh. Request with the prosecuting attorney for outside counsel. This is a case um at the engineer's office through the State Personnel Board of Review. Um, we tried the best we could to uh resolve this case early on internally. It has not been resolved yet and there's starting to be hearings in Columbus. And some discovery demands that our office just is not going to be able to handle at this point. Uh, so we have uh with the help of the engineer's office. Looked around, found a uh an experienced attorney in Columbus that won't have that extra travel expense and. Everything to go to the personnel board hearings in Columbus. This is an attorney we've used in the county before, um, it's with a firm that Corso uses, so they give us a discounted rate. And the engineer's office has agreed to take the bills for this out of their funds. So this is uh more of a routine um application that if the board would pass this resolution. Then the prosecutor would take that, file it with the Court of Complies for approval to hire this attorney to complete this case. My hope is with the background work that we did internally, it'll be resolved quickly and inexpensively. Um, but you know, we don't really know in cases like this, they can take on life of their own, but we think we've uh, we've got a good start for them.
That's my question, who's gonna pay for that? So, you know, I would just ask that we incorporate that into the resolution, make sure that the general fund pays.
That's, that's, yeah, that's fine, we can change that, um, and I do have an email that they've agreed to have the bill set there, so that's no problem.
Yeah, I want someone there too, like you said, a no cost general fund, no cost of the. I mean, it's taxpayer money somewhere, you know, it's, you know, the engineer's money, but.
It's not our money. I'm taking.
Right.
Thank you, Bill. Um, Trumbull County Engineer Gary, I guess you got like eleven to twenty here?
I mean, I've got a lot again.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner, Gary Shaper, Engineer's Office. Number eleven is uh to approve the consultant agreement modification of the West Market Street Bridge rehab project. What we're doing is moving money from one part of that agreement to another. It's a no, it's a zero add mod, it's solid, no increase to that contract. Well, is to award all bids as listed there for my team's materials. Um, you know, typically, we'll we'll go on the best price, but we take into consideration plant location availability. That's why we accept all of the bids and enter the contracts, suppose. Thirteen is to award all, there's an enter contract. The gas falls concrete, high performance cold mix, has a cold mix material, likewise. And uh, got the bidders listed, and again, best price considerations taken into account, plant location. Availability of the materials at that time. Fourteen is to build a contract and enter into a contract, West Bridge. The replacement of superstructure of York Street Bridge in Green Township, West Bridge, so lowest response. Fifteen is again, the board, most responsible responsible, they give us bridge, Hewitt Gifford Bridge, that's right on the border of Georgetown, Florida township. Uh, both those projects, hundred percent federal money on that, no cost on office. Will receive a construction process across the area.
Nice to see bridge replacements.
Kids rolled out a lot of money last few years, bridge funding. We got a fair share. Sixteen is to approve uh MOU between the county Gustavus Township and American Transmission Services. Transmission Services is a subsidiary of Earth Energy, Ohio Edison. Uh, they're constructing some transmission lines up through the township Gustavus. Um, none of it is within the right of way, but they will be using our roads and township roads, small routes to access. Um, drives, field drives enough to construct those lines. Only one of our roads, Stoddard Hayes is posted, so technically, it really wouldn't need an agreement. Since they're gonna have city vehicles out there utilizing these roads, it typically wouldn't be on a grid of your vehicles. They're gonna enter on MOU with us, video before, video after, any pairs that are viewed. Those roads will be made by protection. Seventeen is uh to concur with our office, great angles for Charles. Thirteen. Concur with our office, great special all-in permanent steel coils, D A R O. And nineteen is to curate their office, create the right-of-way contract. I did want to double back to the West Market Street, not that item, but that topic. The bridge project, we're currently winding down, wrapping up of the design phase and we're in the middle of our right-of-way acquisition phase on that. Uh, Julie Green gave me an idea on this, a little bit of uh laundry on this, because we're wiring it right away on several parcels. I also spoke to Attorney Phil Danso earlier about this, there's a parcel that's owned by the Commissioners. Set the southeast corner of that bridge, so next. You know, where the rear apartments are on the south side, and then you've got another parcel that's owned by another individual, and then the county's actually got a parcel. It was a hole, um, and we started looking into this and it was identified as a county parcel. We do need a temporary right-of-way from that, usually, we don't want to acquire right-of-way from ourselves. So the only reason I'm bringing that up here, so three to four years, um, there's a lot of activity in that area, it's a peninsula area. Um, you know, they like to deal with that, and we heard it's a lot going on, a lot of discussions. So at the point that the county would sell or transfer that property, I would request a temporary easement, random to our next season. Finalize that project, project will not be constructed until at least the beginning of next year, throughout twenty twenty six. We went to project, just wanted to identify that as something that we're watching, such that property transfers, are they thought of that? But.
Yeah, brings up a good point, it need to be done. I don't have any issues with that, sure.
No, but I have a question on thirteen, on the cold mix. I thought the uh county engineers making their own cold mix, that's the materials.
Pause, this is just for materials, so you're still on materials.
We do have that pump, that makes a really good material that's provided to several.
And it saves us a lot of money, right?
Yeah, yeah, last I knew, it was a hundred twenty, a hundred thirty dollars a ton, we'll produce seventy some dollars a ton, right? So that's.
How do we sell it to the other townships or anybody?
Townships, cities, villages, university, um, MBSD comes and picks it up, Colombianic. Uh, the village of Colombianas come up from time to time, purchase material off us.
So how many tons you think you make in here?
I couldn't answer that. I don't know if it's thousands or hundreds, but you know, we also do our own material when we pave roads. Uh, with the cold mix materials, basically same material, they have to be slightly different grade issues, we get into the thousands and get out of the money.
Gary, who writes our grants for the engineer's office?
Uh, myself, there's a couple of the other engineers assisted, so if it's bridges, roadways, um, special grant projects. Um, I usually lead on it and Dave Spade, very active, I have one of the works commissioned grants, right there.
We do a great job of that, because I know several last couple of years, we get an awful lot of grants from bridges and roads, and there's a lot of federal money. Someone's got to do paperwork.
They stay on top of it.
Yeah, they do.
All these that are awarded, we're all applied for. Yeah, like West Market Street Bridge, it's on there, you know, moving a little bit of money, you know, consulting end of it, that was started at least five years ago. We were awarded that grant, here we are, five years out, we were awarded the grant until the time of the construction, at least with the federal, a lot of state eligible. There's a lot we need to do, we need to have a good, ready projects ready to go.
Good to.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Uh, twenty, I guess I'll turn this over to Daryl, you want maintenance?
Daryl Donegan, uh, special projects, uh, facility, facilities administered to the Trumbull County Maintenance. Um, we had talked about this briefly before, but just to bring it up again, make it more official. Uh, looking to approve the replacement of the domestic hot water boiler at uh Trumbull County Jail. Uh, the boiler serves the jail's kitchens necessary for sanitizing the fishery. We received two other quotes, the best quote was all hours mechanical, it's thirty eight thousand, two hundred and twenty seven dollars.
And just to make note, I think originally we had a quote twenty thousand more. I think we were at fifty.
We have previous quotes of fifty three eight.
Fifty four thousand.
And forty eight.
Can you find?
Yeah.
Right, better quote. I'd like to demand you on that, Daryl, to save the county money. Commissioners, I think this is something that really needs done, I think we're, we're putting. Silk on a pig, so to speak, when we have to repair this thing.
I don't think we have an option.
Excuse me. Right, I mean, I know that we had put it on uh about a month ago, but um, this is something that definitely needs taken care of. Okay, uh, planning commission, next.
Uh, Nick Hoggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission. Item twenty one is to establish creation of Fund zero eight two, uh, Office of Economic Development Fund, the Eastern Trumbull County Planning Commission. Uh, we are designated as the Office of Planning Commission, or the Office of Economic Development, presection three oh seven point zero seven. Um, it allows us a lot of duties and I specifically put into the general action. Uh, one of the participants is to receive and accept grants, gifts and contributions of money. And establish the board any funds that are necessary for the deposit dispersed with gifts or contribution of money accepted for economic development purposes. Uh, the main reasons we want to create this fund, uh, recently, the Warren Trumbull C I C voted to uh dissolve. They still have some funds left over and it was decided by that C I C board that they should be donated to Trumbull County for the purpose of economic development. Um, so this fund, you already have an Office of Economic Development, it's division of the planning commission. We're not creating any new people, this is just a fund so that we can accept those uh for the purpose of economic development legally. Um, and then they can be used for economic development in the county. So this is just establishing that once we receive those funds that were voted on by the C I C board. Um, and be dedicated for the purposes that they were uh designated by that C I C.
Nick?
Yes.
Questioning that, uh, did they, did their attorney look at that and verify the transfer, or don't we know yet?
I have not heard back from them, but we've been looking on our end, um, and we believe that we can receive those funds. Uh, as the Office of Economic Development, we said, we're given a lot of statutory duties that we can provide. Um, I put in, I think it was like item number six, it specifically says we're allowed to receive funds for the purpose of economic development. Um, so while they're doing a review, we're doing what we need to on our end to to accept that. So once that review is done by their attorney, we, I, we for, we can concur with us, but. We I before we concur with us, but if we do this now, we're not waiting on. We're not waiting for them to say, okay, yeah, you can do it, then we have to go do these steps and we're limbo and drag this out. We're doing it right now, once they agree. Directly, we can receive the check the next day.
Right.
That would be.
Due diligence.
Yes.
If you have the next one too.
Yes, I have the next two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um item number twenty two is to approve the dedication of ninety four thousand one hundred eighty six dollars and fifty nine cents. As local matches the transportation improvement district application. For the construction of Trumbull County Mines Road and State Route forty six intersection improvements. Uh the TID is going after received a grant last year to do detailed design at that intersection. Uh it was warranted that it needs a left turn lane, we have detailed design of the process to move forward. And our consultants working on that gave us an estimated project cost of five hundred ninety four thousand one hundred eighty six dollars and fifty nine cents. Uh so we are moving forward with a grant application through the TID to uh actually construct all that detailed design. The TID max max uh grant award is five hundred thousand dollars. So we have a ninety four thousand dollar one hundred eighty six cents shortfall. Um. We are, we want to secure these funds so that we can get that grant submitted on Friday, this Friday. Uh one of the things that we plan to do is to continue to seek other funds to help cover that cost. Uh so that the commissioners do not have to pay the full ninety four, but short of securing that ninety four thousand dollars. Um that grant application will not be as competitive unless we already have secured funds. Um once we secure funds, we can continue to seek, we are looking into what's called six twenty nine funds currently. Uh that would help match and reduce any local share needed. Uh but we do have that shortfall between the maximum reward for the TID application and estimated project cost. Uh so at this time, we're asking that the commissioners would back us with that shortfall. For that gap funding uh so that this project can move forward, we get that turn lane in. Hopefully, construction is done by October first and it has no bearing on the holiday shopping at. Uh mall complex that is obviously right there by that intersection.
Sweet, the word of funds gonna come back.
Well, what's, what are your odds? If you're a gambling man and less getting reimbursed for that ninety four thousand or finding those funds to get back?
Seventy five percent. I'm pretty confident, but a grant's always a grant, you can, you. Don't always get everything, you know, I still have to make the application, I still have to. Make a competitive application and make sure that it's it's awarded, but I I feel good about this project. I think it's a very uh deserving project and necessary project, I think the economic impact in the area. Uh shows the value of having it done. Um I believe that the state can fund us with that.
Commissioner, this this all started. Because of the diversion diamond and they know it's a three year project and it's gonna really congest and clog up forty six and eighty two. So they were looking for a means to get people out of the mall to go right. And head toward Youngstown or head toward four twenty two to come in kind of the sideways, the back way to the mall. Um. Last year wasn't so bad because they had the lanes open on forty six. We are gonna see a lot more construction upcoming this year and with this year's mall traffic. Um we don't want to hurt ourselves, that's where we get our tax money and people can't get to the mall, they can't spend their money. We can't get the tax money off of it and we lose money, so. I think this is a crucial investment to make this happen. If we do it after the diversion diamonds done, then we. We waste our time with this whole big project on things and this is something that. This was put in for a need to get done, timeliness was the need. Um I was hoping that that we'd move even a little faster than what we are, but if we can be done by this October. That still solves the problem for this year and the following year until the version diamonds done. So I'd say yes, if we want to earmark some of that money out of. Two million, you know, and then pay it back. I'd be okay with that.
Do we have, we have to move any water or sewer lines out of that, are they in there? Or are those lines in the right away that's gonna cost them another four hundred thousand?
Now, Commissioner, we actually specifically asked our consultant to design so that our water detention is not even affecting the gas line, so.
So really what we're looking at, we're looking at Mines Road, we're looking at uh the Diamond. And then we're also looking at Howland Corners, so all three of those are gonna be upgraded, correct?
Yes, sir, and and I to add to Commissioner Malloy's point, um. This is gonna help with that diverging diamond, but there's also Bass Pro Shop just opened up and I believe it's Canyon Outfitters, it's going in right there. So there is gonna be increased traffic based on the developments uh that is going into the mall complex on that road specifically. Um so even though this was a timely matter to help relieve congestion with Virg and Diamond. It will be a relief for for all of. For the future at all, because all of that traffic going down Mines Road. Uh is gonna be increased based on the development, based on how the uh the mall complex is allowing other structures to be built. So there's gonna be an increase in traffic for perpetuity, so this will be a a long term project. Relieve congestion and create better safety.
What are they really proposing therefore? More lanes or or what?
Uh so at the end of the day, it's it's gonna add a left turn lane going north on Mines Road, turning left onto uh State Route forty six. Um and it'll, it's and they're gonna update the timing signal, they're gonna improve some of the drainage. Um in the in the area, so.
Gonna widen the road just at the end a little too, so you have the right, they can turn right or they can turn left without being one line to do either or.
So what they get down at Howland Corners?
Yeah, where it stands right now is with that light only having two lanes without that left turn lane. Uh based on people coming south on Mines Road or and north on Mines Road, people wanting to turn left, wanting to turn right. That traffic backs up past the uh secondary egress for the Bass Pro Shop and TJ Maxx there. Uh creates a little bit of a traffic jam, creates some safety issues. Uh having this left turn lane allowing people to turn left and timing that signal. Gets that traffic moving, relieves those egress points for TJ TJX um and the Bass Pro Shop. So that it it creates better traffic flow, creates more safety, um removes any hazards there.
Yeah, and we might may not even have to spend it if he gets the grant, you know.
Seventy five percent odds of getting paid back for it, I like those odds.
Yeah, my ultimate goal is so that you don't have to spend a dollar, but. Currently, the application's due Friday and I don't have those other funds.
We're gonna get the grant, we have to.
Yeah.
I'm in.
I think we're all in.
I'm in.
So we just need to transfer the money into this?
Uh no, no, you just, you just, at this point for the application, I just need a letter or your journal action stating that you've dedicated that funds. Um I could submit that with the application, I will continue to seek other funds as we move forward. Um and hopefully you don't have to spend any of that money, but. Should should we get the grants and I don't get the other grant, that project still moves forward and and relieves the safety. And congestion issues there. Okay. Um item number twenty three. This is to accept and concur with the twenty twenty four annual report. And meeting minutes with recommendations of Texas Senate Review Council for Trumbull County. All active agreements approved prior to December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Uh Texas Senate Review Council is statutory council that that meets every year. They review any company that has a an abatement of any kind, tax, current financing, enterprise zones, community reinvestment areas. And all of their individual agreements, they have metrics that they must meet, personal property investment, real property investment, job creation, job retention. Um and on this council, there are three people appointed by the board commissioners. Uh two people appointed by every affected community and one person appointed by every affected school district. Um they went through and reviewed, this year we had sixteen enterprise zones. Um all of them were in compliance based on their metrics in the agreement. And we had seven community reinvestment areas, five of them were in compliance based on their community reinvestment agreement. Um and two found to be in noncompliance. Uh the Texas Senate Review Council reviewed each one of those agreements based on metrics and the dates in there. Uh of those sixteen enterprise zones, they recommended to continue the agreement as written. Uh for fifteen of those, they recommended one of those enterprise agreements be removed due to expiration. Their contracts expired, but we still need to take formal action to actually expire it and take them off the the abatement record. Um of these seven community reinvestment agreements, uh like I said, five were. Uh to be in compliance, four of them were recommended to continue with their agreement as modified or uh as stated. Two were recommended to go back for negotiation, so they were in noncompliance for one of the metrics. The Texas Senate Review Council wants that company to go back with that local community and renegotiate, whether it be the percentage, whether it be the length of time. The the and and get them, don't just revoke the abatement, but get them into compliance at some point. But they wanna, they want that company to go back to the table and renegotiate with the locally affected community. Um and one of those was recommended for removal due to expiration of their agreement term. Uh again, just like from the enterprise zone, they run the length of their abatement, they're due to be expired, we need formal action to remove. Any questions?
Very good, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it, by any condition.
Thank you.
Alright commissioners, we have. Thirty one vehicles in total. I'll read, these are all the same, but I'm not gonna read through all these vehicles. Um authorized facilities administrator decommissioned scrap. Let's say thirty one, this is ten, but unsafe scrap vehicles to Metalico Youngstown in Warren, Ohio. Vehicles are unfit for use due to serious disrepair. Or damage, for these have just been sitting around. Collecting nothing. Thirty one vehicles, we'll get their weight and I guess we'll get their, you know, weight in metal, whatever that may be per ton.
Well, I think it's finally get rid of that ice one there that.
Right.
It's been sitting there for years and we mentioned it to uh Harlan and Gerald a few weeks ago and. They got right on it and they're gonna clean up the mess, not only they're gonna do that, but I had a little conversation with them yesterday. I believe that companies are even gonna come in, all the vehicles away, so that's gonna be no cost to us. So um we're gonna get it cleaned up. And and it's a sore.
That's right, we got a multimillion dollar wellness center across the street with a junkyard, basically across the street, it was our fault and. The speed that they got this done blows my ways, for two years we've been kinda talking about this, asked questions, he came in the first week and. Gone, so.
Shows you what happens with someone who cares.
That's great.
And the other thing is, um here, you're here, um we had a little conversation about. Once they get these vehicles out of there, the parking lot is a mess there. Is there any way that uh you could go down there and take a look at it and maybe grade that parking lot and I know there's a lot of um. Um grindings that was hauled in from the states and maybe use some of that to fill that in, to level that off there. Could it work?
All right, we could definitely take a look at that, I'll talk to David in the highway department. See if it's something we can address, and you're right, yeah, we do have extra grindings that could be.
Yeah, and that was all free from the state, correct?
Yeah, it's a lot of, I mean, our local projects too, they come back, but we did get a, you know, a large amount from some of the state projects.
And maybe that could work. And then, Commissioner, also, they're they're looking at maybe um painting the fence and the buildings there, I mean, it. Once you clear out all this car, you're gonna see a lot of ice oils there. It's addressed, so they do have a plan. Great job.
Commissioners, would that make a good impound? We were talking about the Sheriff's Burden.
Let's get it cleaned up.
We could look at it, but then again, like I said, we had a big beautiful wellness center across the street, we beautify the neighborhood, we get rid of a junkyard. And impound lots.
Put junk in.
Impound lots turn into junkyards, so as we know, they cars.
Let's get it cleaned up.
Sitting there forever.
First, yeah.
Okay. Bill Danzo Prosecutor's Office, I just wanted to point out real quick, I know there's a lot of vehicles on here, so just for the commissioner's sake. Dirk and I did talk about this and a three oh seven twelve I. Talks about uh personal property, including vehicles that has no value, the commissioners are allowed to dispose of it or scrap it. And that's what uh these vehicles, though there's a lot of them here, these are all ones that have been determined that to be. They're no longer useful as vehicles, there's no value to them, they're damaged, they're old, they're rusted out to the point where they can't. So I just, just for the commissioner's benefit, that's the the logic and the legal end behind why. You would get rid of these as scrap because they are no, there is no value to them anymore from what I've been told.
Just also good to know for a residence that there's no, they have no purpose, no use.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, Gary, sanitary?
Yeah, Commissioners, uh Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer, I'm twenty seven, this is the. Uh final substantial completion for the Amy Lake project, did a partial. Substantial completion for the portion on Amy Run Road a few months ago. And this is uh completion of the entire project. And it includes additional thirty three properties and uh Yankee Lake Village. Uh Commissioners, I'm gonna uh refer this one to Bob. Ariano, the Trumbull County Controller, I mean, Trumbull County Sanitary Controller.
Uh Commissioners, this agenda has been discussed for the past few months. Uh this is basically to raise our water rates. Um two weeks ago, the commissioners had requested that we sharpen our pencils and we were originally at two dollars, twelve dollars and fifty cents. Immediately, we were able to um postpone some work. Placing some meters, we'll hold off and deal with an eight year period instead of a four year period. So we were able to get it down to about twelve dollars and six cents. And Gary pushing a little bit more to get to down to twelve dollars, so. That's we're requesting to amend our rate structure to the chart listed.
Um the commissioners have been discussing. Uh prosecutor's office brought to our attention. That the commissioners um. Could enact a re um. Some sort of a application type process for those that are on homestead, those that are on. Uh you know, some sort of fixed incomes, um elderly. That. We would have to work with the auditor, I believe, to get the numbers. Um. I know none of the. Commissioners here are very happy about, you know, raising these water rates at all. However, I remind the commissioners that. This is um, this is part of the ORC, which states it's mandated that as. Water rates are costing the sanitary dish, they need to be compensated by the resident, unfortunately. Ten years have gone by and they haven't been compensated, so here we are, where we're at. Um Commissioner Malloy, you and I had some discussion about it, I don't know. About voting on this until we find out. You know, if there is the possibility for these residents that are homesteaded, that are on fixed incomes, that don't have. You know, the the monies to to be able to put this into their budget. Um Commissioner Malloy, you may have some more to add, I know that we had, we had made some discussion about the possibility. But I don't know where this goes from here.
If if I may, um by my own sanitary engineers. I researched a little bit and we can absolutely implement a homestead. Discount, we'll say a lot in a better term. Um in doing that, so ultimately this twelve dollar rate provides us with nine and a half million. So if we're to do a discount off of this rate, it will just reduce the amount that we need. And so basically what I would say is, I I can, I I actually already requested from auditor editor a listing of homestead properties. Uh and I can redo these numbers today. But what it would essentially do is increase these twelve dollars, it's twelve twenty five and twelve fifty to. Offset the discount, because in the end we would need nine and a half million. So we can absolutely do a homestead discount, I believe uh prosecutor, assistant prosecutor Dan's gonna have set that. Um but if we change these numbers. It would increase the numbers on the sheet and then have a line for discounted homes. Which is similar to what other communities, including Warren, offer.
So nine and a half million more in the whole, like they are.
No, in total, the the total number that I need is nine and a half.
What is the total number we bring in now?
What is the total number we bring in now?
Um. Last year. Seven points.
Seven point four, so we only need to bring in two million dollars more to get where we are, correct? If. Alright, I think. We need to do something as Board of Commissioners, we need to act somehow, be responsible, we need to be fiscally responsible, that's our job, is to make the county fiscally sound. But. This should have been done years ago, right, it should have been done by passports, every passport going back fifteen years ago. And to have the taxpayers now. Pay for the mistakes of passports and past sins of it, I would like to see something somehow. And and I know there's, there is no money left anywhere else, basically, but if there's a way we can have money somewhere, even out of. That money to meet halfway of that two and a half million, so that if we're gonna do an increase. We take it out of somewhere to meet that cost for the year. Uh. To not have to raise the rates as stressingly as as what they are, I I could see in some areas, it's only a three-dollar increase. Two and a half for most of the people, but there are some communities. Like Warren Township and and Howland where. It's a five-dollar increase, you know, for five and a half dollar, five and a half. So if there's anywhere we can meet somehow or do something, I I just don't, it just doesn't sit well with me. To just jump things up the way where they need to be, and I, there is no other way, I guess, we need to come up with it, we're bound by law to come up with it. Um, it's no different than a township. Having a levy to pay for their firemen or policemen, they put that on the citizens to pay for it, it's a service that people use. And if you don't use the service, you don't pay for it. But. The jump the way it is, just. Doesn't sit well with me, I'm really troubled by this.
I don't, the problem is, where do we take it, there is, we we don't have Commissioner, we don't have the monies. Uh, to be able to support it, you know. And I understand, and I feel the same, and I know Commissioner Bernard does, we, nobody wants to raise rates, but. It's a, it's, I mean, it has to be done. Um. And we're gonna have some other budget issues too, that need to be discussed, even with our budget that we just. You know, that we just approved, there's gonna be some additional cost involved here and. I don't know where to go with it, really, um, it now to hear that we can enact. A discount to those homesteads, but we gotta make it up on the people, that's, that's not gonna fly.
And we get up on the other users.
Yeah, we're, we can't make it up on the other users that just, you know, so.
And and we gotta rule out, there's no way. To implement anything else, yeah, I don't wanna affect the people that already pay water from another entity or. Well, water or whatever it is that aren't using these services, that's, people use these services, they're getting the product, they're getting the services. Um, but is a little troubling too, because what do we, we're at a. Eleven thousand customers, eleven thousand households, is that what it is?
Eleven thousand customers.
Eleven thousand customers out of a hundred thousand people in the county, and it is, we're not. This isn't like it's something for everybody, this is something for.
What are the rates in Youngstown? Water rates.
Yeah, I, one day I did, I one day I did find in my research, Liberty is paying seventeen. And residents in Liberty Township are paying seventeen dollars. Liberty's twenty now, so we're looking to go to twelve, which Liberty residents would. Die to have the rates, what we're looking to do.
Justification of where we're at, you know, with the rate with other uh communities to make it even. You know. You can see it, it's, you know, black and white.
Well, I still have a question, and. Twenty twenty-four, the water, the water fund was fifteen uh one one five. Okay, to me, that's a lot of money, right, and um. I believe you said that it was due to rate increases?
The ball block.
And and so that caused us to go one point five million dollars in the hole? So whose rates went up, did all the rates go up?
Um, that's in that original.
I mean, when you go from two hundred eighty-five thousand that you lost in twenty-three to one point five in twenty twenty-four, I mean, it's just like, wow.
In your, in the original packet that I gave, that.
You've given me some.
But if you look at the ball crisis in every district, I mean. Twenty-four. Uh, New Falls. In.
Twenty, but it's gone up to one point, one point five billion.
And.
Is is what you're telling.
And we're estimating this year, it's going up another four hundred thousand, the ball water cost.
Is that through rates or is that through water usage or what? I I mean, I I I did ask you back in in twenty twenty-four, how much water was used?
Yeah.
And I I didn't get a total from that, I think you sent me a whole packet, but I I was looking for a total.
You know, I I, what I sent you was our, we do a spreadsheet for each public.
But I was looking for a total, you know, how many millions of gallons was used and what was the revenue for that?
And and I mean, I can total them up from this.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I mean, I've had questions from day one, I mean, you know. I walked through the door, ten days later, you had a rate increase, and now I see that, you know, back then, you wanted me to go twelve, twelve dollars and fifty cents. Uh, per thousand, and you said there there were no cuts, and now today you come in and you say, well, now we're down to twelve. So my question is, can we keep going lower if we keep cutting costs, I mean, you know, have you guys cut any costs out there at all?
Well, and and we've self-imposed a higher, so we haven't replaced anybody that was self-imposed by.
I think there could be some other cuts there too, I mean. And I haven't had a whole lot of time to dig into this, because I've been working on our budget now, but I I mean, everybody can cut. And and we're asking the people to pay more, so I'm asking you guys to cut more.
And and we're, we're willing to do whatever we pay. But with our.
I mean, you told me two, you told me two months ago that you couldn't cut, this was the number, it's twelve fifty, and then you come in here today and it's like twelve.
So ultimately, what we've done is we've pushed, we've pushed a ten-year project debt to twenty. So we're not, we're, we're just adding time to notes, to redo a project instead of paying it for ten years. Which we frankly should have the money to pay for it upfront, we're gonna have to pay for it. So it's not necessarily the most prudent financial things to do, but we're doing it to save on. Need to save more.
I think we need to, when we do implement something, we need to write it in there that from now on to perpetuity. As we absorb the water increases, it automatically. Gets passed on, that way so we don't have to make these tough decisions again. That happens, and then we need to be diligent in our dealings with Niles, wherever we're buying water, and make sure that we keep that. In mind as these rates go up, that we have to put our foot down eventually somewhere as far as. You know, what we're willing to pay and what what they're charging us, it's been found a fair blend.
I'll also, back back in, I think twenty, you indicated that in twenty-eight and twenty-nine, there may be rate increases needed?
Uh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, Commissioner, we, if we do, if the cities do increase their ball water rate to us.
What's your current contract saying?
Contracts for all of them are all based on the city's inside rate. So the cities cannot increase our rates without increasing their inside rate. But there, there's always a factor on them, but they're, they're, they all vary. Uh, our Southeast Water District, we're paying eighty-eight percent of Niles' inside rate. But that's the only one that's below the inside rate, all the other ones, uh, uh, the City of Warner is one point five times their inside rate. Um, City of Youngstown, it's it's one point four. I'd have to look through each one to get you exact, but they're all based on the inside rates of the cities. So when they're increasing their rates inside the cities due to same reasons we have, our rate goes up accordingly. And if they do go up as the years progress, we would like to do the pass-through of rate increases so that uh it's. Any increase on our end, and that's what has hurt us, and that's why we're in a position now.
What's hurt us is no one, no one took corrective action, they shouldn't, that's what hurts.
It's been, it's been eight years and. Everybody decided January one was the time to raise the rates instead of December thirty-first.
I guess Commissioner, Commissioner Malloy had asked about if we could write something in to ask for future rates, and I guess that would be a question for the prosecutor about. We can, sanitary engineers is able to, I don't wanna say artificially raise rates. But can we pass through without a resolution from the Commissioners? Because we've always operated under the assumption that the board controls the rate, we can only suggest the rate, so. Without a board voting on increasing, even if it is just a pass-through.
Yeah, Bill Danzo Prosecutor's Office, my guess would be, and I wanna verify this, don't get me wrong. Uh, my guess would be that if that was possible, it would need to be a resolution of the board. As far as creating sort of a, a policy on the water rates long-term, and I'd have to look to see whether that was. You know, in other words, it wouldn't be just adopting, this is this year, this is next year, this is the year after, but it would be that this beginning in twenty twenty-five. Here's the rates, but every calendar year, it will be adjusted in accordance with. You know, again, could we have a long-term policy like that, maybe, that's what we would need to look at. But that would need to be approved by the Board of Commissioners ultimately.
I I just want to caution the Commissioners. That we did put a hold on this for two weeks, this was on the agenda, and I called and they, they did remove this from the agenda. If the Commissioners choose to vote no, we're gonna dump the sanitary into a fiscal emergency. The state will then have to come in and do their audits and due diligence, so. Putting this out there because this this vote that we're gonna take, if we take a vote.
Are you a hundred percent sure that all the costs, that they've made all the costs that they could have, are you a hundred percent sure with that? So you're, you're willing to vote for a rate increase, a question to you is, are you a hundred percent sure that all their costs is in cash, they could?
Commissioner.
I think the answer to that is no.
No.
Right, so how can you rate, how can, how can you go for a rate increase till we have those, those answers?
No, it's just gonna dump them into a fiscal emergency, or else, what's, you know, and I've been told by the sanitary that they could cut their entire. Crew, what did you tell them?
If we have no water to park.
No water to park.
We don't test the water every day, we would still.
They could cut every day and still be in a loss.
That doesn't mean that they can't cut them.
Commissioner, kicking the can down the road again.
It's been kicked down.
I know it has, and I I, you know, well, we'll put it.
I just wanna make sure we don't have, have positions out here.
I understand what you're saying, but, you know, I, you know, I. These people are receiving water and they're gonna need to pay for the water, it's gotta come from somewhere. Or there's no water, what happens when the water's gone, shut off, or there is no sanitary dish, or there is no water. Uh, provided by us, what then? What are you gonna do, turn on the spigot and they're out of water?
What happens to them, to the person on fixed income?
I understand that, and that's why we, we, I, we look.
That's why we have to make sure that everything is done properly.
And and they kind of.
Not not just walk in here, you know, a week after I get here and say, vote for it, just think, just think if we would have voted for that.
Commissioner, you and I are both in the same boat, I understand it, I I walked into the same thing, I know.
You know, and now we're, now we're, we're three months later and we're still finding out that maybe we can cut, maybe we can cut. Just think if we had to pass that the first week, I don't know where where they're gonna cut.
Yeah, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, Commissioner, as Bob mentioned, you really can't afford to cut anything, all we can do is delay things.
I I I think you, I think there's some areas.
If there was, I would make, I wouldn't, believe me, we have. Okay, uh, the answer to Mr. Hernandez's question. Right now, the Sanu Youngstown's uh outside rate is thirteen twenty-six per thousand. Amphil is fifteen ninety. Pony County is fifteen sixty-three per thousand. Aqua Ohio is fourteen dollars and thirty-four cents per thousand. Um, Niles' outside rate is at ten point seven. The City of Gerard's outside rate is twenty dollars and twelve cents. Lowerstown is at thirteen fifty-five. Uh, you know, that's, we, we have one or two that might be less than twelve dollars, but they're the inside rates of the cities. Niles, McDonald and Gerard.
And Niles is where we, where we purchase a lot of our water, and they're, they're at almost eleven dollars.
Yeah.
They buy.
They're at a lot of dollars.
Donald has a special contract with them V S D, right?
When they combined, when they combined all the water rates a couple of years ago, were you for that or against that?
I was for that.
And and why were you for that?
I was for that because if we wouldn't have done that, we would have had to been charging up to twenty-five dollars per thousand gallons of people.
Or or you were for that so you could, you could put all the funds in together and use that and delay a, a rating?
Well, to, to prevent raising Warren Township's rates to twenty-five dollars per thousand gallons of drinking.
But and and why is that, because, because that system can't pay for itself, correct? So now everybody else has to pay for that.
Right.
Right?
Yes, I that's a, I think that's a fair.
But but the reason that all the districts were combined is so they, you guys could take all the money combined and and use it.
Right, so the whole district to pay for the whole box.
So those districts that had money, you took, you took the money out of that and put it towards districts that didn't have the money. Basically, is what you did, and all you did was, was kick the can for two more years, and that's where we're at right now.
Right, well, Commissioner, believe me, I was trying to increase the rate back then, and and that's all we got was a consolidation, a financial consolidation.
Do you question, do you think, if we're all getting the same service, should people in Champion be a different rate than people in.
Well, they were.
They were.
They were, okay.
But is that fair, so the people in Howland get half the price of the people in Champion?
Why, why was, why was that, why was that happening anyway?
Commissioner, that's what I inherited, that's what I inherited in ninety-nine and and two thousand and four when I got there.
But.
I can tell you exactly what happened, I've said it publicly before, politics. There's voters in Howland and the people wanna keep this, people like you and me. On this board before us wanna keep their jobs by keeping the people in Howland happy, so they pushed it out to, oh, let's make the, let's make the people in Braceville pay, let's make the people in. And uh Warren Township pay, let's make the people in in uh Champion pay it. So the people in Howland, the mass number of voters are happy, and the Democratic people in uh that ran. Howland took care of the Democratic people that were on the Board of Commissioners.
But isn't that basically what you guys did two years ago, I mean, when you combined the district?
No, we made it fair for everybody, so if your county, if your county service, it'd be like I said, you know, with our electric rates, while people in Champion. You pay more on the aggregate, the people in Howland, you're getting a cheaper rate, we got you.
Because you didn't raise all the rates, and all you did was, was, was put them all in the same.
So they threw a whole big buy, we're buying the whole vehicle.
And took all, took all their money, and now you wanna make all the rates the same.
Well, not not necessarily because. If you would have micromanaged the sewer lines and the upgrades and the valves and the everything that were done. That was, that was, that should be done for the whole district, because you're not getting any water to anybody unless you do your upgrades to their equipment at the headquarters. So this year made everybody pay the same, if you're a user, that's who you pay. As, me as a well water guy, I go well water. All the well people in the county paid the same, we've always paid the same fifty-three dollars or whatever it is for the water by not getting water built in into our sewer lines. We're paying the same, and so why would the people that are utilizing the water pay the same rate? And like I said, why should people in Howland be any different when they turn their shower on than the people in Champion?
I I get that, but what I'm saying is, when you combine the rates, you didn't raise any rates, all you did was take the money.
Correct, and we probably, when we combined the rates, what would have been the smart move to have been?
That's when you should have.
It's looked and said, the highest rate we're paying right now is Mosquito Creek, everybody goes to nine fifty-six, and we combined the rates, it's what we should have done. Howland should have paid nine fifty-six, all these townships, so Warren Township went from seven to nine, Southeast from eight to nine. We should all went to the rate of the highest person, and then we wouldn't be in this problem we had right here, we should have raised the rates when that happened, when they combined everything. But he combined them first to save costs, now we're at the next step, I wish we can just do that now, I wish we could just say. We're going to the highest rate, and that's what everybody pays now for a year, and then we're gonna go incrementally from there, is there any way to do that without being in fiscal emergency?
I'm all against that.
So we're all still paying, we're all paying the same, but we're not paying, one's not paying anymore, we're all paying the same.
And, and we broke it down, we will lose at twelve dollars for the whole year. We'll basically break even the rest. We will have lost three hundred thousand, we've lost already, we'll just maintain it from April to.
There's a couple of things going on here, we are the cheapest of anywhere else in the county, we're cheaper than people in Liberty, cheaper, e, e rather than Brace, cheaper in Youngstown. So we have been getting a good deal, problem is we've been getting way too good of a deal. That's driving us into this financial situation that we're in. There was a sweetheart deal, and like you said, people in Youngstown, people in Liberty, they'd love to take this deal right now, they don't have that opportunity. And we've got people that are complaining saying, no, we want the best deal. People in Howland. Wanna, wanna pay eleven dollars less than the people in Liberty? What makes that so special with things that the cost of water is the cost of water? To be able to turn a spigot on of clean water, that's the essence of life. And, and there are costs to go along with that, I want them to make, to test every day. I wanna make sure that they're, they're upgrading their pipes, I don't wanna be in a boil alert every month because they got another pipe went bad, they had something wrong, they can't afford to upgrade their.
We have some problems with quality of water because I met with West Farmington last weekend, and there's, there's some problems.
He's already rectified that, he's already, we spent millions of dollars to rectify that situation.
Well, not according to them, as last week he did rectify it.
Uh, Commissioner.
I mean, they tell me that their water sits there for six days before it gets there, on, on up to where they're at, it takes six days.
Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer commissioner, we just did a, our study that EPA required us to do is called a chlorine to case, to case study. Not exactly sure if that's six days. Is the correct figure on that, we are looking at water. Uh, about fourteen miles to get it up there. And we are, and we know that we are having problems with keeping the chlorine residual on the buildup of the disinfectant byproducts. Now, we have, uh, we add chlorine to the system down at the pump station of Braceville. We had too much chlorine to, it's chlorine residual and that's gonna increase your disinfectant byproducts, so it's a delicate balance. I get it through that system, and we have been fighting this since day one, since we started that system. And that's why we are building that state road regionalization project and it's under construction now to get Warren water and there's there the new Paul water.
So what you're telling me is where you're testing it and where they're testing it, they're getting two different tests?
We are getting, we are testing it at the hot box, uh, that goes into West Farmington, and then it's their system on the other side of the hot box, so yes, they would, they have to sample inside their system.
And they tell me that's two different, um, quality of, of water.
Well, once it gets into their system.
And all they do is go by what you're telling me.
Right, once it gets into their system, it's gonna age inside their system also. So, so they're farther from the source. And we have made every effort you possibly think of to, to, uh, increase that water quality for them. And we have, and even brought on the state road regionalization project, it's currently being constructed. And to even increase that, that's why we need a booster station down there, and it's Warren, uh, treatment plants out there and. So that we can bypass that water, once we do start getting it from Warren, so it doesn't have to go through the city's entire system. And we can just send that water straight from the treatment plant out into Braceville.
Well, the only thing I can say is they're not, they're not happy with the quality of water that you're.
Well, we're not either, and, 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 yes.
I met with them, they asked me to come up there, and I met with them, and I told them that I would bring it up. I don't know where we go with it. I think they wanna get off the system, they wanna do wells. But they're buying what, almost a million, eight gallons a, a month?
Um, Bob, you have.
I don't.
You have a lot of those.
Take my word for it, it's almost a million, and, and they're paying. A different rate than everybody else is paying?
Well, and all the customers out there, they pay the rate which is, do I have that for me somewhere, Bob?
Well, they're, they're not buying it at a bulk rate.
Right, they are all.
My, if they're, if they're buying a million dollars.
Right, well, Commissioner. Yeah, yeah, the, the rate in the Braceville district is nine twenty-six per thousand gallons. For everybody that was part of that project, the blueprint project, they are also paying a capital charge of over twenty dollars per month on top of that. Now, the large customers out there, we, we asked West Farmington in the beginning, but you're gonna have to also pay a capital charge. You wanna base this on. How many connections you have and it's gonna be twenty dollars per. Uh, per connection that you have, like you're doing outs, outside the village? Or do you want me to, uh, calculate what the village's sure, share of the debt is and roll that into the rate? That's why they're paying twelve dollars and something, it's because they have that capital charge incorporated into their, into their rate itself. Can you, can you follow that?
That was their choice.
Yes, and that was their choice. So then, that's why them and the other large customers. Uh. Southington Estates, the village of West Farmington, Southington Scholes, the chicken farm, and the highway patrol, they all pay that higher rate, but they don't have a capital charge on them. Like, like the, the residences are drawing one single residency.
Financially, what we're buying the water from, New Falls, we all rate it, all rated it at one point four percent, which is what we do. The rate will be higher than you're paying now for all, all great, but plus in debt.
Are they aware of that?
Uh, the mayor hasn't reached out.
Uh, yeah, for our agreement.
Maybe you should reach out to her then.
Okay, for our agreement with the village of West Farmington, their rate should be higher than what they are right now. But at the moment, uh. Putting everything on this line, coming out of there, a city of Warren, where our water rate is going to decrease dramatically. I don't have the visibility with West Farmington in that big rate increase. Although, by all rights, we have it right now, but I, I. I'm hesitant to do it. And, um. Because I know this project's coming where our water rate is decreasing significantly, and I could probably, I could get it to the village of West Farmington without having to increase that rate.
Well, I, I would ask you to reach out, because it seemed that there was a flow problem also there. You know, too much, too much pressure, not enough pressure, so they, they have a lot of concerns.
Right, well, Commissioner, we, some of the things we found out out there was that, uh. They turned off their auto. Now, uh. That was last summer, and it really caused problems on their end by doing that. What an auto button are is, you go out, you take a, let's just start, you go out, we have to take a sample or water sent into the lab, have enough chlorine. Uh, low enough in, in the disinfectant byproducts. You send that out, oh, it came out bad, then we need to flush this line, okay? Well, next time we test it, then we flush again. Eventually you get this balance, where you can put auto flushers on the line to say. Every night at midnight, we want this thing to go on from midnight until twelve fifteen. And that'll keep our water quality up if we're not having to run out here, uh, send people out here to sample this all the time, so you can put auto flushers into your system. To automatically flush these things, you put up on timers, and you're always testing with lab results to make adjustments. And you do this as, as the year progresses with the different weather. It's colder weather, your water quality's higher, and in the hot weather, yeah, it, we're, we're fighting it, been fighting it a lot more, so. Anyway, from what we understand, they turned off their auto flusher because of what they're seeing water being flushed out that they're paying for. And what it did was cause a huge contamination inside their water tower. But then they ended it, so eventually they had to melt their entire water tower out of water. And then they couldn't get it started back up, there was something wrong with the internal mechanism inside the tank. So what that did was their pressure's gonna go down because they don't have a water tower anymore, they're, just off the, the. Our mains coming in. But when everybody gets up and flushes their toilet in the morning at the same time, yeah, the entire system's gonna drop the pressure because you don't have that water tower to, uh. To neutralize that pressure. So that, that's the difference is the pressure there.
Yeah, I'm just relaying what I heard.
Okay.
Bill Danso Prosecutor's Office, I just wanted to kinda bring up one thing because it did. It started with a legal matter that came up years ago, and I think, Bob, I think you were here, well, it was twenty sixteen you were here, I believe.
I started at the end.
So. There was an issue that had been brought to the county's attention back then that. The six hundred fund that we talked about earlier, that's the general, sort of the general fund where that, where that money comes into from every district. To pay the general expenses of the sanitary engineering, uh, department. So employee costs and things like that, correct me anytime if I'm wrong on any of this, but. What had, what had been discovered by, I think, the prior sanitary engineer was that these districts were not self-sustaining, like you had talked about, some of these out in Braceville that had higher costs. What was happening was the six hundred fund. Was being disproportionately funded by some of the other districts, like Howland. These larger districts were paying more than their proportional share, so to speak, of that six hundred fund expense, the employees, the general expenses of the department. The question was presented to the attorney general ultimately. Whether that was appropriate, whether that could be done, or whether each district had to stand on its own, because these were all separate districts at the time. The attorney general's response, and again, this is all public attorney general stuff, so I'm not disclosing any privileged information. But the attorney general's response was that, no, if it is an actual separate district, each district needs to be able to stand on its own. And fund that general expense of the department proportionally. So the attorney general in that opinion gave a number of options, one was to increase the rates in each district to be able to proportionally fund it. The other was to consolidate the districts into one district to be able to share those expenses. The third option was dip into the general fund. And of those options, the most palatable to the board at the time was to combine those districts into one district. So. That's just some, some of the background legal history, I guess I wanted to, to make sure that you guys knew as you're considering this, as you're talking to Gary and Bob. That's the reason for the consolidation from the legal perspective, now again, there was the practical, financial, all that stuff was things that they had helped figure out. The, the sanitary engineer at the time, um, and the financial people, whoever they were at the time, and I'm sorry, I don't remember. Um, that's how, that's how that decision at least came to be made. How that was determined, all the funds, I don't know about that, but that just, I wanted to give you the background legally speaking on it.
Thank you. All right, well. Think we've, how much revenue was gained when you guys combined the district? Well, I mean, you had to have some, you had to have a, uh. You had to have a bank of money upstairs. So you had to gain something, I mean, the district, when you combined all, you took eight of them, you combined them together, you had to have a chunk of money, how much was that?
Whatever the unencumbered balances was in the seven different districts, whatever they added up to, and that was the unencumbered balance.
Do you know what that was?
Gary, give me the name, please.
Uh, Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer, uh. We, we have that.
Bob Meyer, sanitary engineer.
That's all.
Um. So the unencumbered balance is, we combined them in twenty twenty-three. And we started the year with two point three million and ended with two point. So when combining them all together, we had two point three. Twenty, in the beginning of twenty. In the beginning of twenty, so January first of twenty-three, we would have had two point three million dollars. And then through twenty-three, we lost two hundred eighty-five thousand, ending twenty twenty-three at two point one million. And then twenty twenty-four is when all those bulk water costs really hit us, lost them.
So in twenty eighteen, we had three point four million, correct? And it started, it starts like. Two nineteen, twenty nineteen?
Yes.
Was the rate increase asked in twenty nineteen?
We did a rate study in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty, in twenty was when we recognized that we need to. Move forward with. Take a look at this and, and, but twenty-one is we put together the rate study. Yes.
And the rates, the first rate increase was given to the board in December of twenty-two.
So you waited. Yeah, so you waited. From twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two before you asked for a rate increase?
Um, the rate increase. Proposal was submitted in twenty-one, and it just didn't, it took them a lot of.
That's the year that you lost the least amount. Twenty twenty-one, you only lost fifty-five thousand.
Well, and at the time, we did it in twenty-one where we lost the four sixteen one seven, so we didn't know what the loss was at the time.
So why do you think the loss was only fifty-five thousand in twenty twenty-one? Then the next year jumped up to three hundred seventeen thousand. I can work, I can work a little. I mean, these are just questions, we need to answer.
I, I used to, I used, I, a few weeks ago I had to answer that question, there was some sort of anomaly that happened there. Trying to remember one.
And then in twenty twenty-three, it went back down, and in twenty twenty-four, then it just, boom, one point five million.
And that's when the new water contract came up with Niles.
Yeah, well, not the new water contract, they just increased their inside rate, yeah. There, there was something that happened in twenty twenty. I think there was something that made that one.
What are we paying Niles?
Uh, three thousand. So all together, Commissioner, if we were to raise the entire rate to twelve dollars per thousand, Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer. Uh, six dollars and eighty cents of that is for the bulk water. Five dollars and twenty cents per thousand is what we're using from several water districts here, and all the reporting requirements for still. And, wow, uh, hydro replacements, five dollars and twenty cents per. And I won't put that up against any other water department as valid, if anybody else can do it as good as we can, that's sort of fine. Five dollars and twenty cents a thousand will be had to actually. Operate maybe any water systems.
We're also asking for five dollars for, for a replacement too. You know, you're asking for, for an increase of three dollars.
Yeah, that's over thousand, that's just.
But, yeah, but that's still money then, generating.
We have things that we need to do out there, like painting up the broken water tower, there, there's other tanks that need to be painted on, uh, various, uh, intervals. Just paint that water tower out there, that's over a million dollars. Uh, when we have things like this, oh, do I, uh, uh.
Are there grants available for any of that? Are there grants available for any of that?
Commissioner, there are grants and we do apply for them, but they go for other projects like that. I got, uh, over, uh. Four billion dollars out there in that state road regionalization project, that's where I direct.
Yeah, but are there specifically grants that we can paint water towers instead of costing us a million dollars?
I, I, I don't wanna say no, but I don't know of any.
So you're just unsure?
I, I, I would say, I, I've looked at it in the past, didn't find any opportunities there for grants for it anywhere, but that's not to say something hasn't changed here recently. And, and if I weren't aware, but I would, I would find it.
If he knows about any grants like that. Right?
So, you're, yeah. But we'll, we'll, we'll get to.
Yeah, yeah, well, we can ask.
Commissioners. Do we move on?
Any other questions?
Oh, so we need to decide tomorrow, I, I.
I know.
I don't wanna vote on this as it is until we see the homestead thing written in here somehow in a long-term plan. For this, I don't wanna just put a Band-Aid on it now that you're still dealing with this. Now, if we're gonna take the heat, which we are gonna take the heat, I mean, unfortunately only one township did a resolution against it. But that township also had an increase in their levy for the fire department a couple of years ago, and we didn't complain and say, you shouldn't. But that township also had an increase in their levy for the fire department a couple of years ago, and we didn't complain and say, you shouldn't tax people more. Uh, and they, they got probably the most out of our service this year. I, I think they're gonna have to understand, and the public's gonna have to understand too. That we're doing the best of what we can, we're providing a good service that's still as cheaper than every other water district in the region. Uh, and just like you said, just looking at Youngstown, Canfield, Liberty, and what the people are paying. Something's gonna have to be done, but I want a long-term solution, if I'm gonna take a bullet for this. I want to be a martyr, and the people are gonna remember, hey, you took the bullet now, but it's easier on the next board, it's down the road. So that they don't have to be in the situation we're in right now. Now, we're gonna be the, the responsible, fiscally responsible board, and we're gonna go down in history of doing that. I want that legacy to last longer and do the right thing and not just what we have to do to not upset people or, you know, or, uh. Worry about our own political asses, I want to make sure we're doing it for the right reasons.
Well, I want to go down in history as being fiscal responsible for citizens, okay, and I, I'm, I'm not there yet.
Well, and that, what we're getting towards there, every question we ask, everything we're getting towards there to understand it. If there's other things we need to know, that's why I said that.
Look what we have to do to get there, you know, we have to critique from them to get there.
But yeah, but the question, we go to every department and look at, look at, and critique what they do for a living. I mean, I, I believe the figures that these guys have, they are what they are. We're basically giving a five dollar bill and saying, go buy me something for twenty bucks.
Yeah, Commissioner, I mean, if we would have passed it two, two and a half months ago, we'd have been at a higher rate that I don't think we have to be at.
And we would have been able to provide more services with that higher rate, as far as maintenance, it would be none of ten years, instead of twenty. Trust me, nobody wants to spend more money, none of us wants to spend more money, but I want our citizens to have good, clean drinking water this time.
And I agree with that, but the answer isn't always putting it on the taxpayers' back.
I understand that. I mean, hey, maybe it'll rain like hell, we'll get a flood, and we'll get free water from God, and we can do our own things in our house, but. But short of that, we, we gotta have our sanitary engineer do it.
Okay.
Commissioners, I have a previous engagement, I, I know I brought it up to you before, but I, I have to think about the bug out of this. I apologize for that, but it's a pre-scheduled thing that. Signed up for, yeah.
Okay. We can recess so you come back.
What's that?
I said, we can recess so you come back.
Um, it is a good thing we're meant to, but, um, I apologize, and I apologize, I didn't know we had a speaker in here today. There's nothing I can do to adjust the schedule. We can, but I trust your judge Ron, so you'll get an update.
One, one thing before you go, Commissioner, um, are we gonna put on the dog town application? I think that's in the process of being, um.
Into the grant?
Yeah.
Uh, I would agree with that, yes, and the other thing I would agree with is you and I, Commissioner, got a tour of the fire department. I, I do believe that we do move EMA into the fire department, and we look at the best option for retooling EMA building for the coroner. I think we have our solution there, it's just finding the money, but I, I don't think, I think after what we witnessed on Friday, Commissioner, um. Bernard and I attended a tour with EMA, they showed the old set of fire department, which we own. They showed what needed done, and, and John Hickey, as you can see, fully believes that that is the place to be for him and for his services. And I agree with him, so if he leaves where he is, that leaves his building open, which the coroner said does work for him, he's already there. And I think he gets, continue to be there, we just need the first step now is to work with. Mister Hickey to get things moved over to that building, get that refurbished, and whatever we need to do, he's looking for grant money. Uh, we're gonna reach out to building trades and people and volunteer firemen to try to rehab that building the best we can, utilize the free labor. Uh, to get it to the condition where it needs to be, and, but I think we have our solution there, at least, we just don't have the dollars. But I think that's our route we go, and I'm fully supportive of Mister Hickey moving there and moving the coroner into his building.
And then talking to Mister Hickey, he thinks he can go up with four hundred thousand. Yes. For the move, he thinks he can get that done for four hundred, which I, I hope he can.
And I believe in our community, with all the volunteer firefighters we have in the county, and with our building trades. I, I think a day or two work session out there for the softest, the painting, the things, I think that can get done at no expense to the taxpayers, so I think it'd be a great community.
Well, I, I agree with that, I think that's our best option, because we do need, we need a home for the coroner. I think that's, that's the least expenses if we move him out there, and let the coroner take over where he sat, I think. Dollar-wise, I think that's.
And I think that's our solution for that, and I, and I do want, that one has a meeting coming up, we'll look at that, address that, I think, tomorrow.
Before you leave, Commissioner, um, I had the opportunity at the health board meeting with, uh, Director McLozie. To take a tour of that, that whole area there, that upstairs, Tacy. That needs to be nine one one, if we can make that happen, that whole area up there is wide open in Portland. They're gonna have houses torn down over here off the side for parking, uh, Tacy's already been there, and she agreed those spaces are workable.
I agree a hundred percent, conception of that.
I believe that that's gonna have to be our new nine one one center after.
That saves us, we don't have to pay for anything, it's free rent, and all we have to do is retool it, so we're saving money in both those places, instead of building another building. Then, then there's the dog pound we have deal, so we have homes potentially for all three, we just don't have the money. Maybe when it rains that flood of water on us, it'll rain twenty dollar bills for us too.
We can get that grant for the dog pound.
That would be great.
At, at least we're gonna apply for, that's something that's never been done.
But again, this is progress, I believe, and I thank Mister Hickey, first of all, for doing this, and Tacy for the work she's put into. And the coroner for being patient, but we're moving in a positive direction, I feel really comfortable about the direction we're moving in. I trust this board, I'm happy that we're working together on these things, and there isn't a problem, I don't think we can't solve together. Even with this water stuff, it's difficult, we're gonna take a beating on things, but if we do the right thing, we'll be able to hang our heads high in the end, and know that we did the right thing for the taxpayers.
Okay, Commissioner.
I apologize, I, but I will listen in tonight and see what I missed out on.
Not much, we had a couple others, uh, number thirty. Is to enter an executive session, uh, pursuant on higher revised code one two one two two G three, conference with our attorney. Did I skip twelve? Oh, I'm sorry, I did, that's a long water conversation, twenty-nine to adopt. A resolution authorizing execution of amendment number three to an agreement of sublease with respect to Truma County Juvenile Detention Center. Um, I mentioned one twenty-one point two two G three with our attorney. Um, involving a dispute or pending imminent court action. We will reconvene from that under one twenty-one point two two G three. Then we will go into another executive session. Under O R C one twenty-one two two, to consider discipline of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against. A public employee official, licensee, or regulated individual unless public employee official, licensee, or regulator individual requests public hearing. And then we'll, we come out and reconvene from that under the same O R C one twenty-one point two two G one. And that includes our workshop, we do have.
I only have one short question, when do we go into executive session, say, my item thirty-two? Should we be made aware of why we're going in here? I, I have no knowledge, I walk in here and presented.
Um, yeah, Commissioner Bill Tanso Prosecutor's Office, you know, usually, a lot of times, the department heads will. Alert the commissioners or someone as to why that is, but in, in many cases, it, it does not need to be. Any more specific than it is on the agenda, and a lot of times for personnel-related reasons, that's, there's a reason for that, it's an executive session, it kind of protects the identity and the. The, the, uh, real specific nature of what's happening there, but I, I don't think there would be any problem, um. You know, if, if you were notified ahead of time, obviously, as to at least the general.
Yeah, right, yeah, just so we know what we're getting into, I mean, you know, if we walk in there and they ask us to make a decision, then we just find out about it.
Well, and, and I will say, a lot of times, that is, that is sort of the, the reason and the nature of the executive session is that. It's, it may be the only way to get all three commissioners together to hear something, especially, you know, in case of a. Discipline, maybe hear from H R, or in the case of a lawsuit, to hear from your attorney, it may be the only way that they can. Get all three of you together to, to talk about that, though, I, I know in legal matters, sometimes they'll start off by. Sending you maybe a letter that's attorney-client privilege beforehand or something, um.
Everybody knows about it except three of them.
Yeah, well, yeah, when we get in, we, we learn about it, but I don't know, do we, Lisa, do we get any information prior?
It just depends on.
You never.
Who it is, what department it is.
We, we have to ask.
I mean, just something generic, so we kind of know what, you know, what they, what's going on.
Yeah. I guess we'll just ask.
Just food for five, that's all.
We know soon enough, ask the question, you know.
Yeah, right, yeah, in your, in your mind, yeah.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, so that concludes our workshop, we do have Mister Piles here from Basit. Now, consulting, I'm very, uh, I'm sorry that this meeting ran as long as it has, I hope.
Appreciate it, it was a shame to listen to.
But if you would, uh, please give us your name and.
So Commissioner, do you want to maybe kind of share why, why I'm here, I guess, or maybe discuss?
We have a, we do have a knowledge of why you're here, I guess, uh.
Yeah, we're just gonna maybe hire a consultant, grant writer type, uh, company, individual, and helping us, uh. Garner must-need grants in here.
The water towers.
Yes, anything we could garner money for.
And you're one of several people that's coming in, so, you know, we're just kind of open it up to you. And tell us what you guys do, I mean, I know what you do.
So, if, so to kind of address the, the elephant room, grant writer, not all grant writers and grants consulting is creative. Some just to, to, uh, hey, I, I, this, uh, this pipe I need to order up and cost me half a million dollars, it's gonna. Impact this many households, and so on and so forth, go on and. Then there's, what, what's the strategy here? We wanna, we wanna do this, we, we're gonna hit this many homes, we're gonna impact this many businesses, we're. Impact this many communities, we're going to have this workforce impact, this economic impact, and so forth. So a broader conversation, so on and so forth, so that's why, I mean, why, uh, grant writers and grant consultants, it's not all. Uh, if you want somebody who's just gonna churn out numbers and churn out words and so on and so forth. And the second thing is, it's, what, what are you trying to accomplish, coming more, easing out the strategy. And then also connecting the dots, saying, hey, uh, oh, you're gonna be doing this over here in this community, you, you said this two months ago about this community. Maybe there's some conversations around aligning strategies, getting more efficient resources, so that's kind of what, um. Myself and our team kind of does it differently than, say, what a typical grant writer company, you know, when we start taking. That's what most people think about grant writing, is, is you tell you what our problem is, you go find a grant, and you put it together, that kind of thing. Um, it's, it's a little bit different in that regard, I think that's value-add as well.
Is, the, because we had discussed, you know, that we had had some that, you know, had, um, a grant writer, but they lobby. That, that word lobby, I don't know.
Advocacy is what we usually.
Okay, you use advocacy, right.
And, and the distinction I put in with that is, and I've had that conversation with the folks, is, a lot of times, people get on a, on that, and lobby, so on and so forth. As commissioners, you guys are talking, but you, you guys are lobbying, and then you guys also talk to state legislators, federal legislators, and so on and so forth, and. Um, you are interested parties, and so you're advocating passionately in some cases, uh, I wouldn't say you're that passionate up here. Even Kim, I'm joking, anyway, um, but, um, you know, you advocate for that. And so what we do is we work with organizations to, to help them think about how they're advocating for their projects, how they're also aligning projects in a cohesive way. Being efficient, so on and so forth, and, um, the analogy I go with, like, for example, when we put the school, school districts by and large. Um, get kind of heated about that term lobby, um, so we'll say, hey, you know, what we do is, the difference is, we'll take you up to the doorway, we'll explain what you need to say. You actually have superintendent, treasurer, whoever, um, and we'll even sit in the room with you. And encourage that conversation, but we're not gonna make the asking, you need to be, the reason is, one is, we want that legislator, we want that policymaker, we want that. Person who's receiving the advocacy, if you will, to have that relationship with you, not me, I don't want that relationship, I want them to have a relationship with you. And so that's the distinction between what we make based on that conversation.
And then at that point, when you get to that point, we process is that writing that grant.
Is that up to? It depends on the, the nature, so sometimes, for example, let's say if it's a water and sewer conversation, just because you guys been the, the whipping boys today, I'm joking. But, um, it, it'd be, you guys would be the content expert, you guys have, you know water, you know sanitation, so I don't, I know how to flush it. My kids do too some days, but that's a different conversation, um, but the idea is, I would know what questions to ask you. Hey, tell me more about this, this funding source, is this, this, and this, it tells me you need to do this, this, and this. Tell me what, do you have content about that? Project management, some cases, they may have a bunch of content, they may not have any content, but it's more, hey, we're gonna have an hour conversation, you tell me what you're trying to achieve. To put it together, and so on and so forth.
It creates.
So if we have a project, do you help us find where the grant money is?
Yes, yes, and in some cases, he, he may not know what it is, but he may not have the capacity, I'm just pointing, but, uh, may not have the capacity in some cases, or. You know, hey, uh, these, these same commissioners are telling me, I, I need to really think about something creative, and so on and so forth. Sometimes we'll come at it from a different angle too, so it may be, we go out and identify funds and, and bring up opportunities, and maybe there's existing funds, grants. How do we look at it a little different, and maybe do a little bit more of a common scale too?
So everything that, that we're being told by our state reps and state legislators are, that we don't have, um, projects ready to go. So when there are funds available, yeah, we, we can't just go in and say, give me five million dollars, we have to have a project ready to go.
Yeah.
Okay, if, if we kind of know what some of our needs are, but, um, we're just not sure how to go about it.
No, and it's sometimes it's prioritizing, uh, what's priority one, what's priority two, kind of, what's phase one, phase two? Um, and sometimes it depends, I may be talking to you and you should say, this, this project's priority one, but I turn over here and you're like, no, no, this project's priority one, that kind of thing, so there's that. That dual conversation, but it's really collectively, what do you, what's the priority for the county? What's the priority for the taxpayers, and what's also the priority for the department heads, because you also guys, you have department heads here that. Uh, what's the priority for him, may not necessarily be a priority for the prosecutor's office, and so on, so to that point, um, figuring out what those priorities are, or areas are. The other side is looking at the funding too, so for example, we look at A R C funding, Appalachian Regional Commission. Uh, we work with townships, counties, government entities, school districts alike, and almost every one of them. When they start out looking at a grant like that, they go, well, we need this now, I said, well, if you need that now, that's the wrong funding source. Because you're looking at about twelve to sixteen months out, because you look at the process, the review process, and so on and so forth. Before you even can start to draw down that funding, you're looking at sixteen months, you're looking, you want to look at a project that's at least sixteen months out, because you don't want to set yourself up for failure in that. Um, and then also looking at performance, you don't want to match money from this year's budget then, you want to be looking at matching money from next year's budget. And planning ahead, and so on and so forth, which allows you guys to have some forecasting and some projections on that regard too. So that's, to that point, knowing what those priorities are, and looking at different funding sources, and say, well, this project, if you're, if you're doing that in two years. You need to look at this funding and start to build it out, um, if you're gonna do, do this in twelve months, you need to look at this funding source. Hey, maybe you need to prime in your legislator now, so that way, when you talk to him in three months, this isn't the first time you're asking him for that five million dollars. You're talking to him and kind of feeding him the conversation, so that's also kind of what we do as well, it's kind of, how do we talk about it in a broader sense?
You think there's money available for a water tower, okay?
As you guys are sitting here, I was looking at various funding sources, it just depends on the, the water tower situation and so on and so forth.
If those are avenues that we've never looked at, that could save us money.
What does a water tower cost, I mean, this is my opinion to that.
It's around a million dollars.
A one, one tower?
Particular one, yes.
So you may not find a grant that covers the whole.
Yeah, but he's just talking about painting.
Yeah.
All right, well, Commissioner, if I took. Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer. I, I know grant sources, and I put them toward projects, if I were to focus on this tank painting instead of. Let's say, uh, blueprint phase two water project, that's what I applied for, to get the grant fund for this year. For the water project out there, now that's not saying, if I want to not do that, that I couldn't say. Okay, I want to apply for this one to go towards this.
I, I understand, and that's what he would be for.
Right.
Because you don't have time to go after the water tower pain.
Well, it, it. It would be a choice on my part, do you want, look, blueprint phase two, or do you want the Brookfield Water Tank?
I want both.
Okay, I can only get one, that's what I'm saying, so when you ask me, is there a grant for that? Yes, there is, but really, there's not, because we have to put it towards something else.
Really, there's not, because we have to put it towards something else.
But anyway, um, uh, what he's saying is too, if there's only one pot of money, and he's got to prioritize a project. Yeah, that's, so if, if he's happened to prioritize, well, if phase two is, has to be priority, then. Yes, and also the other side of the point is, you only have eight hours in a day to dedicate time. But what you're saying is, well, if you've got eight hours, maybe Dustin can spend two hours to work on the paint, he spends his eight hours on phase two. But if it's a different funding source, because you certainly want to make sure you're getting the right paint for your buck, I kind of see where you're going.
Just piles, um. Getting into, I, and I don't expect you to, you know, give us. Direct numbers, but how do you work, retainer type, do you work on retainer?
Depends on the entity, uh, depends on your fiscal situation, depends on the types of projects, so you're gonna hear me sound like a liar, sorry. Um, but it depends a lot of times, but by and large, we work within the base. Or what we like to call a retainer type plus type situation, because, uh, depends on. You have all the types of projects you're doing and so on and so forth, at the onset, we know, well, that's. Two or three days a month versus five days a month, in that case, I would say you guys would be somewhere in that retainer, retainer plus type of situation. What I mean by that would be, we'd agree upon what a scope of work would look like for general consulting and supports and so on and so forth, and then, okay. Okay, well. Based on, um, what we discussed and all then priority of the projects that we think. Could coming, be coming up over a certain amount of time, a twelve month period, let's say, um. That could range, let's say, let's hypothetically say that it's three days, um. But we think, if we went for four grants that are gonna be. This kind of energy, uh, this high energy, let's say it's five days per grant, just to get more numbers out of, of you know where, um. That, that would exceed that three day threshold, then you just have a delta of two days, so what we'd want to do is, we'd want to put in some flexibility in your guys' part. Turn off, turn on and off, stick it, see what I did there, um, but at your, at your, uh, based on your needs and so on and so forth. That'd be the simplest way, I would say, to do it, so that way, first of all, we're not killing ourselves, uh, for something, and maybe. You know, hey, let's say we agreed upon three days, but we're consistently doing six days a month, just because you guys have a high need, I mean, you want to make sure they're serving that. Uh, but until, at, at the end of that twelve months, we're like, damn. Uh, we consistently did six days, but we're only getting paid for three days, so we want to make sure of that, but we also want to make sure that you're getting what you need.
And we talked, so what's the low end and the high?
The low end usually is, again, probably typical like this would be about a three day type of a situation. Um.
You're putting them on the spot.
Put me on the spot, yeah, I see where you're going. It would depend, it would depend on the scope of work, frankly, what all you're asking for within that and so on and so.
When we talk about prioritizing in consulting, um, at, well. Um. Does that mean working with the commissioners with. Sanitary or planning commission or, I mean, how does, so we, we delegate your service to wherever. Wherever we would want to delegate.
Purposeful in your part, and I would, I would encourage you to do that, we've worked with township trustees and county commissioners before and so on and so forth, where we've gotten into. In this, is where you guys have been contacting with us, and then all of a sudden, uh, police chief calls, fire chief calls, alert. Everybody's calling at the same time, and I'm going, talk to your commissioners, is this a priority, police chief, oh, you want to drone? Have you talked to the commissioners, make sure this is a countywide, in that sense. We work for you guys in that sense, but we'd want to make sure it's all prioritized, so, but yes, to your point, uh, you guys have kind of set your. Priority of sorts to, within reason, and then. My goal would be that we're not sitting constantly with the three commissioners and I and the department constantly, you guys also have. Other areas where you want to have your energies and so on and so forth, you're not spending it, looking at grants and funding, that kind of thing, no. If you're looking at, for example, let's say federal earmark or state capital budget requests and so on and so, that would be the expectation that you guys are setting. Because then, when you guys travel down the, on the search of D C, we want you to be eloquent about all those requests and these projects. You're advocating for and so on and so forth, so we want you to be knowledgeable. As well as your, your department, if that makes sense.
And then when you sit down and talk with us, so then if you see our needs, and you see a grant that may be out there, then you'll let us know.
Exactly, that's the key, it's, it's kind of the, you almost do, uh, an informal or formal asset and needs inventory. What I mean by that is, a lot of folks, uh, they'd say, well, you know, like, oh, we need this, this and this, well, hey, what do you have to offer? Do more, um, so I, I focus first on assets a lot of times, because I want to know what you have to offer, because. Funders sometimes want to see what you're bringing to the table, so, but it's not always money, it's, it's, uh, how many people you're impacting, uh, what, what. Good things you, you've already done, and what, what already have you invested in, that you're bringing to the table, and then you start looking at what, what the needs are, so that way. We look at that, that huge universe of funding opportunities, um, and be looking at the various pots of money. From a holistic approach, in that sense.
Are, are you, so, would you be equally state and federal?
Sorry, going after the grant, so. Now, federal kind of right now is, uh, making me twitch right now, but, but yes, yeah. And local too.
But you do both.
Which, was it, uh, where's your firm?
Uh, we're headquartered in central Ohio, but we have folks.
You're doing some in Truma County now, aren't you?
So Brookfield local school district.
So would you write us up a proposal or what?
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, that's, uh, what I'll do, the first step usually is, um, I'll send you over the draft. Um, no money attached to it, because what, what, the goal would be, we'd agree upon. Absent that, then I'd be shooting in the dark, so what that might cost, so on and so forth, so what we would do is we'd send you over. Some deliverables, they'd be general enough to allow for some, hey, the water set, uh, uh, department needs this, the police, you know, sheriff's office needs this. So we wanted to be general enough to allow for some flexibility, but specific enough that, you know, it's not just. Willy nilly and you can't measure success, if that makes sense, um, so the first step would be to do that. You guys talk about it and say, ah, I think this is, or maybe, uh, I had in mind maybe this or that, or, I don't really understand what he said here. Can we, can we give a little more explanation there, once that's done, then I, then my team and I come back and look at our, our brand with. What you guys have asked for, and incident, cause.
Do you find yourself, uh, when somebody prioritizes or has some certain wishes telling them? I don't think that's gonna fly.
Very much, almost right. Um, and that's what a lot of folks pay us to do too, in some cases, they pay us to be the. That's gonna fly, or, the way you're saying, you know, if I let you do this, this and this, it would work, that kind of thing, I was just having that conversation with. They have a couple ideas on some things and so on and so forth, so we're sitting, sitting down and, uh, flushing out some of their ideas, and I said, well. I don't think what you're asking for here would work, but if you did this thing, or maybe if you're impacting this population, it would work. And that's kind of that, that strategy.
So you are working with a lot of commissioners?
Enough commissioners, of course.
Courtesy.
Oh, okay.
Oh commissioner, I, I think that's what we need. We just don't know how to start it.
Yeah, yeah, and there'll be some hits and misses too, um, and, and those conversations is, hey, you know, uh, I got a water tower, I got a paint. And so on and so forth, um. It costs a million two or whatever, there's probably not a lot of grants that cover the whole, but there may be some that cover some of it, and if anything, they take. Take some of the, uh, burden off the county, it's a win, thank.
Oh, I agree.
So you all said this.
Yeah, I can get you some, uh, some draft deliverables over, um. Is there somebody best to send it to?
So you look for, what, a year contract?
Usually twelve months, I don't do anything less, the reason I don't do anything less usually for our team and I, is, um. Let's say you guys said, ah, let's do a six month one. You spend about a month, two months getting to know each other, spend about two months after that doing work, you know, hard work, well. So then you got another month, uh, then, oh, well, let's do the contract renewal and so on and so forth, not enough time, first of all, to have results. Uh, in six months, a lot of grants, that's just the review period, so you're shaving off that first two months. Before you even probably write something that's tangible.
So we give a longer rate the first six months?
Big conversation, I like, I like you negotiating, though. Big conversation, what we call that is a ramp up. Get the price down, right?
I know I've asked for a discount.
Yeah, but we would call that as a ramp up, at kind of getting to know you, um, but the, the reasonable expectation would be then, for example. Set some target, lower targets, let's say, again, I'm using numbers, um, instead of what would reasonably like four grants. You will, or four funding opportunities, well, we're not getting to know you, let's, let's figure out some, some really solid ones to go, one or two. To get it going and so on and so. Just to protect everyone.
Okay, and there's a process to get through or to go.
Correct, understanding, right.
Your first year could be.
That, that's happened, we've had some entities where, um, we've written some grants and in that first year, none of them got awarded, but. Hey, month thirteen, month fourteen, all of a sudden, one or two of them hit, and we're like.
Wow.
That kind of thing, but the commissioners or the township trustees are going, well, at the end of that twelve months, we wrote. Five things and we haven't yet to get awarded yet, and then.
Well, once you get committed to it, you have to stake.
Correct.
You can't just say, well, it's been six months.
That's, that's the trick, that's the trick, and the one that gets.
You have to be in it for the long, long, and the longer you're in it, the easier it gets.
So much easier, because you have content, you also get the, the relationships that it's to your mileage and so on and so forth. You know what, what questions you need to call the prosecutor's office on, and so on and so forth, and kind of feel that, that's the.
Okay.
Thoughts, other comments?
Appreciate it. Again, I apologize for the time that went here.
No, I, I, for some reason I thought it started at eleven thirty, so I had another meeting before that and then I came. But it was okay, it was enlightening to hear the water conversation.
Yeah, you already got your mind.
But I'm also thinking about my home county.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
No problem.
Um, who else, Piles?
Piles.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, I'm just gonna ask you.
Alright, okay, without ever going on to my next one.
We need some other, some other.
We'll work on that then.
Yeah, start from there.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, we have, any other departments, anybody here? Anybody? No. All right, well. That in mind, commissioner?
Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Sir Hernandez?
Yes.